Parking is going to be tough and we get a lot of people just come out and enjoy the day. So you're all invited to come and join us.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you, Steve.
Okay, thank you, Steve. So with that, we'll move on to our next item. We will take a picture after we read the next proclamation.
The City Council will declare July 2024 as Parks Make Life Better Month.
And our council member, Joshua Ron, will read the proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Proclamation, Parks Makes Life Better, month of July 2024. Whereas the month of July represents summer fun and family activities to the people of Southgate and to people across the country. And whereas the residents of Southgate traditionally look to our city's many parks and recreational facilities to provide programs, opportunities, that support youth, strengthen families, and build community. And whereas the city of Southgate supports a strong Parks and Recs program from its community and believes in creating community through people, parks, and programs. And whereas our parks help to preserve and protect the natural cultural resources of California. And whereas Parks and Recreation Services support more productive workforces, enhance the desirability of location for businesses and families, and stimulate tourism revenues to increase the total community development model. And whereas Parks and Rec strengthens community image and sense of place and increased cultural unity. And whereas Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness and increasing the quality of life for young and old alike. And whereas Parks and Recreation fosters human development, helping young people develop and grow into healthy adults, helping adults continue to live longer. And whereas Parks and Recreation strengthens safety and security and reduces juvenile crime. And whereas thousands of Southgate children, adults, and seniors benefits from the wide range of services, facilities, and programs provided by the city and its partner volunteer organizations that provide their valuable services at the city parks. Now therefore it I, now therefore it be proclaimed that I Gil Hurtado, Mayor of the City of Southgate, do hereby proclaim that the month of July 2024 is Parks and Recreation Month in the City of Southgate, and urge all residents to enjoy and recognize the social, physical, mental, economic, environmental, and community benefit derived from our beautiful parks and great recreation programs, which provides something of value to everyone. Sign our mayor Gil Hurtado. Steve, who would be receiving?
For us tonight, we have our newest recreation coordinator, Jessica Villa Lobos, who will be receiving it. So she'll come up and take the picture with us.
Okay.
And just to note, I know we just had Public Works Week and we had PD Week before, but we're Parks and Rec. We need a whole month. See, we're the special department and we know it. We're the best. And that's why we're going to celebrate Parks and Rec all, the whole month of July. We would make it the whole year, but then we'd have to keep proclaiming it each and every January.
We're giving you fireworks. That's how special you are.
All right.
Joey, we want to thank you, Steve, and as a director and as Parks and Recreation for everything that you do, I mean, for the entire city of Southgate and our neighboring cities that come and enjoy those beautiful parks. And all the classes that, I mean, that, you know, goes on throughout the day and throughout the evening. It's just amazing, I mean, how many bodies go through every single day from four in the morning to late night. So thank you and to all your staff for the great job that they do. So if for that, if we can go ahead and, you want to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to let the community know that it's important that 4th of July and the parks especially, I mean, that everybody, you know, you also have entertainment lineup, a whole slew of bands and entertainment. So, you know, get the folks out here. It's a family weekend. I guess it starts Thursday, right? And it goes throughout the weekend, right? So a lot of activity. You don't have to go travel, at least this weekend and that weekend. Stay home and enjoy the, and shop locally.
Yes, we will enjoy the whole month.
The whole month and also concerts at the park, which are coming up, and movies at the park also for the summer for our kids. So there's a lot going on at parks.
I know. We might have to move to two months, right?
Ms. Vice Mayor, if I may, I do want to say this, that it's always an honor. I received this proclamation about three years ago when I was a Parks and Recs Commissioner. But it's always an honor to be able to have these, you know, be given out. I'm a product of our community. I'm a product of our park. Steve, I've told you this many times. You've probably thrown me out of the park more than you like to say. You know, because I was just at the basketball courts too, too late at night sometimes. But our parks and what we have in our community is a blessing. It really is. When you go around to a lot of the other cities in our surroundings, Southeast Los Angeles areas, they don't have the open space that we have. We can go out and have a family picnic. I can go out and take my daughter and practice ground balls in an infield, go see a soccer, go play soccer at SoFi, play indoor volleyball at Park, at our sports center. We have an Olympic-sized pool to be able to, almost an Olympic-sized pool. Is it full Olympic-sized pool where we can go do some lap swimmings and give Al a run for his money there? It's a true blessing that what we have here in our community and many residents, prior to me being here in Southgate, you know, paid money to build these things for us. And that's why I don't take it for granted that, you know, we have to make sure that our generation maintains it. We keep it, you know, up to what it needs to be, improve what we can, so that way the next generation can enjoy it as much as I do.
And don't forget Hallidale Park, that's a big park, and the river, all along the river. There's a lot of, eventually we'll have more activities there.
Okay.
If you don't mind. I definitely want to echo what my colleagues and the sentiment that they've indicated in regards to parks definitely do make life better. You know, not only does it improve your health, but it also improves your mental health. And breathing a lot of that oxygen does help the brain kind of sort of regulate itself with no need for substances. But I definitely want to invite the community, obviously, to the events that we're having at the park. I will not be there because I will be representing all of the educators in the state of California at the federal level. It's a yearly thing and I always miss out on the 4th of July. But again, that's one of my other duties and the other hats that I wear, representing educators in the full state of California. But I also want to echo to the community, to be safe. We are having a lot of events at the park. We're going to have fireworks. And we need to make sure that we protect the most precious thing that we have, which is our lives and the lives of our little ones. There's a lot of illegal fireworks that are going on all around. Our pets are getting extremely anxious and they will just take off just to try to get away from the sound because it's so severe for their hearing. So again, let's just be mindful of our neighbors. Let's take care of our children, those that are the youngest ones in our community, to try to have them have an enjoyable day at the park and within our community. So thank you, Steve, for being the head there and all of the staff at the park. I appreciate everything that you do because without you being there, a lot of our events would not be able to happen. And I know for a fact, we are the envy of our Sala cities around us. And it's like, you guys have Southgate Park. Yeah, we do. And so, you know, I know that a lot of them do come out and have different events in our park because of how spacious it is. So thank you, Steve, for that and all of the staff here at Parks and Rec. Thank you.
So with that, we're going to go ahead and take a photo and if we can have young lady. Okay, and we'll move on to item number three. We're not going to do item number three because Kenneth Anderson is not here with us today. But we will take this proclamation on Thursday, the day of his retirement.
Can we read it into the record?
I don't, I don't have it.
I'll read that. The City Council will present a proclamation for Kenneth Anderson for retirement in recognition of his 29 years of service to the City of Southgate. It's in here.
Okay. All right. All right, let me go ahead and read it. Proclamation presented to Kenneth Anderson in recognition of his 29 years of service to the City of Southgate. Whereas on December 5th, 1994, Kenneth was hired as a general maintenance worker with the Public Works General Maintenance Division. And whereas in 2015, he was re-titled to Facilities Maintenance Technician. Two, his duties include performance and priorities of skills and semi-skills tasked in the construction, maintenance, repair, and service of maintenance of city building, parks, buildings, playgrounds, equipment, commercial pools, and spa equipment. Kenneth also assigned in the graffiti embankment program. Whereas Kenneth's primary role was a maintenance city playgrounds. He held annually playground certificates as well as an aquatic facility operator certificate. Kenneth will be remembered for his leadership qualities, dependently and hands-on approach to solving problems. And whereas Kenneth dedicates hard work, ethics, and loyalty, made him an exemplary employee of the department. Whereas Kenneth will retire on July 3rd, 2023, and will be missed by Southgate employees who have the great pleasure and benefit of work with his esteemed professional and extreme, extremely excited and happy for him and wish him the very best in his moves into next chapter of his life. Now there, therefore, on this 27th day of June 2024, Gil Hurtado, Mayor of the City of Southgate, on behalf of the City Council and citizens of Southgate, do hereby recognize Kenneth Anderson and do thank him for his 29 years of dedicated service to the City of Southgate. Art, would you like to say something about Kenneth?
Yeah, so first I apologize for him not being available tonight, but I do want to thank the council for taking the time to recognize his commitment to the city and his retirement. Thirty, 29 years of service is certainly a long time and something that should be commended. I wanted to personally congratulate Ken Anderson. He will be missed around here. He's Mr. Commitment, Mr. Get the Job Done, and people like that are very difficult to replace. Just a well-liked guy. If you've not met him before, come to our retirement luncheon for him this Thursday and we'll have an opportunity to celebrate his retirement. But thank you for taking the time to recognize his retirement.
No, I just want to say that I remember Ken when we did the Dia del Niño about several years ago, that he used to come out and help us make pancakes. And he loved that. So, I mean, that it's a good remember, to remember him by. So we'll see him on Thursday and thank him for the great job that he has done throughout his 29 years in career here in the City of Southgate. Okay, then we'll move on to the next item, please.
Item number four, the City Council will introduce new and promoted full-time employees hired in the month of May 2024.
Good evening, council. Tonight, every department except for Human Resources has somebody to introduce, but Wendy's not here, so I'll take hers. So without further ado, the first department is Community Development, so I'll turn it over to Meredith.
Thank you. Good evening. I am so happy to introduce our newest member of our team, Nomi Guzman. She started this month. Yeah, this month, I believe. Is it this month? May, I'm sorry. Budget, I'm sorry. But that's the thing is she helped me tremendously with the budget. She came in just towards the end of finalizing our budget. So she was able to help me finalize, reconcile some of the numbers that were not matching. She has a breadth of experience. She's been an administrator. She's worked for a nonprofit. She also worked at Cal State LA as an accountant. She's also worked for LA Community Development Commission as a project manager. So she has a breadth of experience and she brings that, you know, to us. And I look forward to her contribution. And a fun fact about her is she has a YouTube channel that has over a million views. Counsel, Treasure de la Paz, there you go, a million views. So she also brings that talent, which we're also hoping to use when we advertise activities from our department. So I'd like to introduce Nomi Guzman, our newest member of the team. Thank you.
Good evening, esteemed members of the City Council, residents of Southgate, and my family who's watching on YouTube. I'm honored to stand before you today in this new position as Management Analyst for the City of Southgate Community Development Department. I want to express my sincere gratitude for your trust and confidence in me to fulfill this position. Southgate is a city with a rich history and a vibrant community, and I am excited to contribute to its continued growth and development. As a management analyst, I am committed to providing thorough research, insightful analysis, and innovative solutions that will aid in making informed decisions for the betterment of the city. I look forward to collaborating with you and the Southgate community to address our challenges and seize the opportunities ahead. Together, we can ensure that Southgate remains a wonderful place to live, work, and thrive. Thank you once again and for this incredible opportunity. I am excited to work here and make a positive impact on the City of Southgate. And with your permission, I would like to read this in Spanish. If that's okay?
Sure, go ahead.
Buenas noches, estimados miembros del Consejo Municipal, residentes de Southgate y mi familia Guzman que están mirando a través de YouTube. Es un honor para mí estar ante ustedes hoy en este nuevo puesto como analista del Departamento de Desarrollo Comunitario de la Ciudad de Southgate. Quiero expresar mi más sincero agradecimiento por su confianza en mí para desempeñar este cargo. Southgate es una ciudad, una rica historia y una comunidad vibrante, y estoy emocionada de contribuir a su crecimiento y desarrollo continuo. Como analista, me comprometo a brindar análisis profundos y soluciones innovadoras que ayudarán a tomar decisiones informadas para el mejoramiento de la ciudad. Espero colaborar con usted y la comunidad de Southgate para abordar nuestros desafíos y aprovechar las oportunidades que se avecinan. Juntos podemos garantizar que Southgate siga siendo un lugar maravilloso para vivir, trabajar, y prosperar. Gracias una vez más por esta increíble oportunidad. Estoy emocionada de trabajar aquí y tener un impacto positivo en la Ciudad de Southgate. Gracias.
Thank you. Wow. Thank you. Muchas gracias. Okay, who's next? Steve.
Oh, Jessica. Come on up, Jess. I don't do it like everyone else does. First of all, Jessica Villa Lobos is our new recreation coordinator in charge of adult and youth sports right now. So she'll be running the sports leagues and doing that stuff. Born in Mexico, moved here at the age of two, right? Hopefully someone helped you. Okay, just checking, you know? The bad part about her is that she went to Milliken High School, graduating from Lakewood High School. I, we, nah, that's, we're already in trouble there. But that's what happens when I let my staff pick their people, you know? It happens like that. She comes to us from the city of Long Beach where she had 13, she started when she was 13 over there. She was a recreation leader and progressed through the ranks to a Recreation Leader 10, where she assisted with the part-time sports coordinator and did all that over there. She's a first-generation college graduate. She likes to play soccer, has four dogs, and an amazing husband. I don't know why the four dogs are listed first on her thing and the husband second. There's a question there. I actually found out some really good things about her today. She, like me, doesn't like vegetables and could eat bacon for lunch if she wanted to. So that passes the Milliken thing, so she's good now. So Jessica just started with us in May and she'll be running the adult and youth sports. So Jessica, come on up.
Should I just press button? Does this work? Okay. Good afternoon, Vice Mayor and council members. First, I'd like to say thank you for giving me this opportunity and presenting me today with the proclamation. I was honestly not anticipated. I did not anticipate that today. So best believe I will be sharing that with my parents today because that's super awesome. First things first, just like how Councilmember Joshua said earlier today, I am a product of Parks and Rec. I participated in Parks and Rec ever since I was eight years old. I was a youth sports kid. You couldn't take me out of the park. I loved it. My local park was Orizaba Park, if you guys are familiar with Long Beach. And from there, it started off as a project to volunteer at the park. And next thing you know it, by the time I wasn't even 16, I was 15 and a half, my recreation supervisor at the time was like, hey, I need you to get your work permit. So by the time you turn 16, you're going to come work with us. And best believe, she gave me the opportunity to interview. It was my first interview ever at the age of 16. And just shortly, right after my 26th birthday, I noticed that the position for Southgate opened up and I took a shot. I've worked Long Beach Parks and Rec for my whole career. So from 16 to 26, that's 10 years being there. And I was privileged enough to go up the ladder. So now I'm here and I'm here to provide the community with as many memories as I can create with them, just like how I was able to get that when I was young. So definitely passing along all of these activities, passing along all these memories, just to make sure that the community of Southgate is able to receive what I received when I was young. So just like how I was able to receive the proclamation of Parks Makes Life Better, it definitely did me a good. It took me out of the streets. It take care, it took care of me. It took care of my parents. As Steve mentioned, I am a first college graduate student. So if it wasn't for Parks and Recreation, I wouldn't be here where I am today. So just want to say thank you again for this opportunity and I look forward to working with you guys all in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. You got one more?
Our next up is Liam Manikun. And I think I got that right, Liam? I did. All right, I got that one right. He told me the E is silent, okay? I have known Liam now for a whole 25 minutes. We just met. He, actually, our process for the city is that our CSO Park Rangers are hired through the police department. And once they are trained and do their field work there, they are then transferred over to the Parks and Recreation Department. So we just had the opportunity to meet. A couple of things I did find out about him, that he worked for, full-time for the Newport Mesa Unified School District for 21 years. And then for the city of Stanton as a code enforcement officer for 20 years, which means Meredith cannot steal him. That's not allowed, I'm telling you now. He's currently married to a beautiful, wonderful Latina woman, and they have a five-year-old son and two grown daughters from a previous marriage. He grew up in Orange County. He likes to spend time with his family, cooking, eating, cleaning, and taking walks at the park. That may change after he has to be a park ranger for a while. That whole taking a walk at the park is going to go away. And he really likes the fact that he can come to a city that values its community. But this time, welcome Liam Manikun.
Would you like to say something, Liam?
They didn't tell you that part, huh?
I wasn't prepared. So sorry. I just want to say thank you to the council members and the honorable guests. I'm very excited, very motivated to accept the opportunity to be here in the City of Southgate. Before I even applied for the position, my dream job was to be working for a police department. So I tried to apply everywhere and did some research about the City of Southgate and I found out what Southgate really represents. You know, the community, the closeness of everybody in the city. So, and as a matter of fact, I like the fact that you guys have a lot of good restaurants around. So that's a big plus. And so now that I'm here, I just want to say thank you for giving me the opportunity. I promise you, I will do my best when I'm out there to serve the community and to do the best I can while I'm representing our department and the city. Want to say thank you.
Thank you, Liam. Welcome. Thank you. Okay, who's next? Public Works?
Yeah, Vice Mayor and council members, I've got two individuals to introduce tonight. Neither are here tonight, but I do want to introduce them. So first, I'm pleased to introduce Mr. Nicholas Deanda. He began employment with the city in May of 2024. He's assigned to the Water Division where he'll be taking the lead on reading water meters. So he comes to us from Golden State Water, so he's got good water experience. So we're hoping for a very reliable service from him. He does have a little uniqueness about him in terms of his past work experience, working as a meter reader now. He used to work for, he used to work as a forestry technician firefighter for the Bureau of Land Management, fighting fires across the entire United States. So he's made the transition to what I think the perfect role is, and that's public works. So I'm really glad to have him on board. So in his free time, he enjoys hobbies, including hiking and camping. So please help me welcome Mr. Nicholas Deanda. Thank you. The next individual is Mr. Luis Casada. Mr. Luis Casada is, was hired also in May of 2024 and he was hired as an engineering technician in the Engineering Division. He is assigned to the Public Works Counter, where he'll be providing support to the general public with, and developers with encouragement permits, inspection services, and customer service. Luis has a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from Cal State LA, made the right choice. He became an engineer. And in his free time, he enjoys hiking, kayaking, and playing soccer. So please join me in welcoming Luis Casada. Luis Casada. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Administration Services.
So I'm going to take the, take this one from Wendy, since she's not here to defend herself. But it's my pleasure to introduce to council Ms. Alejandra Padilla, who was hired on May 13th. Alejandra grew up in the city of Compton and she came to us from the city of Compton where she spent several years gaining experience as a business licensing. And now she works with us as a business license inspector. In her free time, she enjoys volunteering for events in her community, spending time with her family, and being a supportive soccer mom. And she's very passionate about her job and she's extremely dedicated profession, looks forward to serving the city of Southgate. So it's my pleasure to introduce to everyone, Ms. Alejandra Padilla.
Okay, we'll go Police.
Given members of the council, city staff, and members of the audience, it's my pleasure to introduce our newest academy graduate, Caesar Castellanos. Caesar grew up in Southgate and was actually one of our police explorers. He served in the United States Marine Corps for four years and obtained the rank of Corporal. He has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Cal State University of Fullerton. He was hired as a police recruit on October 30th, 2023, graduated from the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Academy, and was promoted to police officer on May 12th of this year. In his spare time, Caesar enjoys working out and hiking in national parks. It's my pleasure to introduce Caesar Castellanos. And I'll introduce Griselda Rivas, our newest police record specialist. Griselda was born and raised in the city of Los Angeles. She was hired as a police record specialist on May 19th of this year. She has an associate of science degree from Santa Monica Community College in Business Administration, as well as a bachelor's degree in Business Administration from Cal State University of Dominguez Hills. Griselda is passionate about soccer and loves playing the game. She also interned with the professional soccer team. In her free time, Griselda enjoys spending time with her family and researching places she would like to visit. Ladies and gentlemen, Griselda Rivas.
Thank you. Thank you for all those wonderful presentations and to all the new employees that have joined our team. Welcome to our beautiful city of South Gate. And again, this is a family that you guys come into, so you guys are family here at City of South Gate. Okay. All right. So with that, we'll go on to our next item, please.
Item five, the City Council will present a certificate of appreciation to the South Gate Multicultural Women's Club.
Can you also read the other two items because they're basically the same, for the same event?
Sure. The City Council will present a certificate of appreciation to the Women's Federation for World Peace. And item number seven is the City Council will present a certificate of appreciation to the South Gate Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you. And I just wanted to say, and I'm sure our councilwoman also would like to say something on this three certificates of appreciation, that we had a great presentation for the Women's Federation of World Peace. And this event, and as I mentioned it when I got the honor of speaking on that, that day, it's, it's such a beautiful event where cultures come together. And it's just beautiful because different cultures, people that we don't know, come together, we get to meet them. And, and I'm going to have Susan come and speak on this, because you know more than I do on the Women's Federation for World Peace. And you've been working, I mean, with this federation for many, many years. And I remember the first, not the first time, but when I went to one of your events the first time, it was beautiful. So if you would like to come up and say something on the Women's Federation for World Peace, Susan Janer, yes, Susan, you, come on. Susan is the organizer of this event that happened in, in May, in May. So. Yes, but I'm going to, I'm going to cut you if you go too long. Just very briefly, can you say?
Well, first of all, I want to thank the city of South Gate for allowing us to use the auditorium with a fee waiver. Thank you for that. And also Maria, she's been with me on this. How do I do this?
It took you, Susan, talk to us.
Speak into the mic. And anyway, Maria has been with me on these projects since the very, 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 very beginning. And actually, you pretty much trained me how to do these things. Get a notebook, write one thing at a time, all that. So I really strongly feel that this Bridge of Peace concept is so beautiful. It's so beautiful because if there's going to be peace in the world, it has to start with us, with each person, right? So the idea of meeting somebody on a bridge is like going past your own personal prejudices and your own concepts to embrace somebody who's different than you, somebody who you might not know, somebody who could be an enemy in the past between different countries, you know? So that's why I keep doing this, why I'm so passionate about it. And this year, I have to say thank you. Big thank you to the Anna from the Chamber of Commerce, because Anna is the one who really, really, really helped me. She let me use her office and all her equipment and her people and give me advice and different things. So, and also Maria and the multicultural women. They were like, without them, I couldn't have done this. I'm by myself, forget it. So I have to say thank you, thank you, thank you to everybody that was involved. Big thank you to my daughter, who put up with me for the last few months. I was crazy for, crazy about this thing for quite a while. And to my very wonderful friend Katrine and Carolyn Pazinski, without them, I couldn't have done it either. So I think if I'm going to get this certificate.
Susan.
Katrine and Vanessa and Carolyn.
Susan.
Come up with me.
Let me read.
I'm not speaking into the mic.
No, let me read the certificate, and we will get everyone over here, and we'll take a picture.
And we'll take a picture.
Yes.
Oh, get everyone. Yes, yes, yes. So yeah, okay. That's all right, I'm not micromanaging your city council here.
Okay, thank you, Susan. Okay, let me go ahead and read the, let me go ahead and read the certificate. Certificate of Appreciation Presented by the South Gate City Council on behalf of the citizens of South Gate to the Women's Federation for World Peace. We're holding the Bridge of Peace Ceremony in collaboration with the South Gate Multicultural Women's Club and the South Gate Chamber of Commerce. This event builds reconciliation and promotes healing and authentic bonds among diverse groups of people. So also, this certificate is the same reading, it's the South Gate Multicultural Women's Club and the South Gate Chamber of Commerce. Councilwoman, would you like to say something?
Thank you, yes. Ms. Jenner, I think you did a phenomenal job in bringing this to our city. Go ahead.
I want to say I'm so, I'm glad that Pilar was there. She made it, and she saw it for herself.
Well, like anything in life, when you attend certain events and you are part of the experience, you don't forget. It always stays ingrained in your memory. And I think that's one thing that I can definitely commend you for, because you not only made a memory for myself, but for all the women that attended the event. And it does break down a lot of the barriers, and unfortunately, we have differences with certain cultures. I appreciate the Chamber of Commerce for making sure and collaborating the multicultural group, Women's Club, which always has really good events. And again, it's about bringing the community together. Thank you.
Yes, if I can have the Multicultural Women's Club and the Chamber of Commerce. Okay. Leila, Leila from the Multicultural Women's Club, do you want to say something? Okay, go ahead, very quick.
First of all, thank you all.
El micrófono?
Yeah, microphone. Right here? Okay. I just want to say thank you on behalf of our, our group. This is my first time talking in public, you know? But and Ms. Dabila as well, thank you for all your support in being a member of the multicultural club. And thank you for all your help, your support, and your guidance, you know, to our, our group, helping us to grow, you know, to grow and support our community and all the ladies and families of the, of South Gate, okay? Additionally, I just want to say a couple of words on, on my personal level. I've been here seven years in the city of South Gate. I come from Koreatown, where I was over 20 years, 30 years over there. And I just want to say that I just love South Gate. I love my street. I love my, you know, my neighbors. Everybody is so kind and caring that I'm so very happy to be part of this city. Okay? Thank you so much. And of course, you know, being a member of the, of the culture club, this is something that I really wanted to do. I worked for 40 years, and then I said, I want to do something for the community, you know, and I didn't know what. Miss Angela invited me to come to the meeting since last year in August, was my first time coming to a meeting, and I just loved it. And I said, I, I want to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so with that, we'll go on to closed session.
Vice Mayor, item number one, conference with legal counsel, pending litigation pursuant to government code section 549, 56.9A B, I'm sorry, A, 549, 549B3C, A Guadalupe Morales versus City of South Gate. Item number two, conference with legal counsel, threatened litigation pursuant to government code section 549, 56.9B3D and E1, potential case.
Thank you. City Attorney?
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, thank you very much. I'd like to indicate that item number one, A, Guadalupe Morales versus City of South Gate, at my request, I'd like to pull that from the agenda for tonight.
Okay. So at this time, I'm going to go ahead and open it for the audience. Anybody in the audience who wants to speak on these items, please come forward. Be none. Do we have any public comments?
We have no emails.
Emails? No emails? Okay, so at this time, we'll go on to closed session. Thank you.
Si alguien necesita audífonos para la traducción, okay. No, I, okay, we don't have any translation.
Okay, we are back from closed session. City Attorney?
Thank you very much, Madam Vice Mayor. Item number one, counsel with legal, excuse me, conference legal counsel on pending litigation. The case of Guadalupe Morales for Southgate was pulled prior to going in closed session and was not discussed in closed session. Item number two, threatened litigation. The city manager presented a potential case threat litigation against the city. There's no action taken by the city council, but guidance was given as part of that discussion. And that completes my report. Thank you very much.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open it to the audience. Anybody in the audience would like to speak on the items? Be none, we're going to close the items section. Can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Okay, at this time, I'm going to call the Southgate City Council regular meeting of June 25th. At this time, we do roll call, please.
Mayor Otto is excused. Vice Mayor Davila?
Present.
Councilmember Avalos?
Present.
Councilmember Barone?
Present.
Councilmember Rios?
Present.
City Treasurer de la Paz?
Present.
City Manager Houston?
Present.
City Attorney Salinas?
Present.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we're doing vocations. Steve Costley, Director Public Works, Public Works, Parks and Recreation, and Giselle will lead us on the pledge of allegiance. Giselle Mariah Hernandez, keep bowing your heads.
Please bow your heads with me. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day and for all that you provide for us, Lord. We ask for your wisdom today and all the matters before the city council. And, Lord, we thank you for our police officers and all the employees of the city of Southgate. We ask for your protection on all of them. In Jesus' precious name, amen.
Amen.
Place your right hand over your heart, eyes on the flag, ready, begin.
Praise the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Again, just to let you know that our mayor is not with us today. He's, he's at home taking care of himself. He said he wasn't feeling well. So, we don't have any public hearings. So, at this time, we have comments from the audience. Anybody in the audience can please come forward. You can speak on anything that it's not on the agenda. You can go to the next one.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Julia Hernandez Chan, and I represent the Hollydale Library tonight, but I'm also representing the Leland R. Weaver Library tonight. I am here on behalf of both of our libraries to encourage our community to help us reach our goal of helping us log 50,000 books read this summer by August 11th. Both of our libraries locations have wonderful programs for children, teens, adults, and babies also, to help support summer literacy in our community. Leland Weaver is also still offering our free lunch, the library program. It was very popular these past couple of weeks. And we are serving from Tuesday through Friday, from 12:00 PM to 1:00 PM at the Leland Weaver Library Branch. And it is free for any child that would like to come in as supplies last. We also encourage you to participate in our One Book, One County, which is the largest book club in LA. We are reading LA Weather by Maria Amparo Escandon. And we are reading it all together. And so, we really encourage our council to participate. Thank you so much and have a good evening.
Thank you. Anyone else? Now, I'm going to close the audience section. Do we have any emails?
Otherwise, it's going to go off.
City Clerk?
Yes, Madam Vice Mayor, I have a public comment for non-agenda item from Mr. Mario Dominguez. He did state that he is disappointed that the agenda lacks discussion on adding a call-in feature for council meetings despite their community support and recent proactive steps like installing cameras. The city manager could initiate this without formal vote, he feels. And then, he also strongly endorses Treasurer de la Paz for leading our city's technology master plan update. His tech industry expertise is invaluable, and he should present his qualifications to the city manager. We need someone focused on residents' interests, and Mr. de la Paz is ideal choice for this role, he feels. And that's it for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll go on to reports. Public Works, Arturo, any reports?
Yes, Vice Mayor, I have the CIP presentation for you tonight. If I can have the city clerk. Okay, so, just a few projects to report on tonight. The water main replacement project. We're working on a water main replacement project on the southwest area of the city to replace water lines and water services in that community. Their project is doing well. It's, we're actually ahead of schedule. We're looking to complete the project mid to late next month. But to date, all the water main lines are completed and the service laterals. So, we're just working on a bunch of peripheral work. Next slide, please. So, 2D Mall Complete Streets project. I just wanted to mention that we're continuing to make progress in implementation. We've now received bids. We received a favorable bid in that with our current budget, we're now going to be able to fund all of the improvements on the corridor that we previously thought we didn't have funding for. So, we'll have a more complete look in terms of changing out all the furniture, installing all the park lights. So, it's really a great bit that we have to work with. And we're looking to come to council on July 9th to work construction. Next slide. The 2D Mall Complete Streets Phase Two, I just wanted to highlight that briefly, just simply because 2D Mall Phase One focuses on improvements only within 20 miles. So, if you're the neighbor on either side, and you're wondering, what about your segment of the street? We are working on the design of Phase Two that'll make improvements for all the way up to Alameda Street as well as to Atlantic. And so, if you look at the schedule there, the idea is complete construction on Phase One, and we start construction on Phase Two so that for the general public, it's just continuous construction. But that project is under design right now. Next slide, please. So, it's just this is a typical slide that I show on a regular basis with project schedules and some priority projects. Just wanted to point out that on the Long Beach Boulevard and Garfield Avenue Complete Streets project, we lost a little bit of time. We're now looking to complete construction the third or third week of July on both of those projects. And next slide. This is a slide that I showed previously with the five-year history of the capital improvement project to demonstrate how we're making improvements, be it safety, water quality, sustainability, congestion relief, or what have you throughout the entire city. We're also improving a bunch of parks for Mr. Steve Costley here. And so, it's just, it's been a busy CIP program. And I shared this slide just as a preface for the next slide, please. So, this is what the city will look like next fiscal year in terms of active projects. The city still has a healthy CIP program. We've just, council just approved another $30 million. So, we're back at about $100 million for improvements. On the right, you see the list of some of the priority projects. Those that are in black are in the construction phase, either because they're out bidding or because they're already under actual construction. So, there's a long list of projects to make, safety, congestion relief, and just a handful of improvements throughout. So, if the public wants any more information on any of the projects that we're working on, they can go on the city's website. Next slide. Oh, and that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve?
Good evening, Vice Mayor and council members. It's about 4th of July time. So, once again, Southgate Park, 4th of July, busy place. 9:00 AM, Southgate Junior Athletic Association All-Star Games. 2 o'clock, the carnival opens up. And 9:00 PM, we have our fireworks show. So, come early. Parking will be very limited. There's going to be a lot of people there. It's a great day at the park. So, come enjoy that. The second thing is that we do have concerts in the park starting the 5th of July. Excuse me. We revamped a lot of it. We are not only having a concert, but we will have food trucks, beer garden, and a children's rec area. So, we're doing a lot more with it. So, we want the whole community to come out and enjoy the whole day over at the park.
Thank you. And I'm sure that there are a lot of community members are going to come for those concerts at the park, which is very well attended. Meredith?
Good evening. Nothing to report. Thank you.
Okay. John?
Good evening. Real quick, as I do always, just real quick rundown of the jobs we have available. Anybody who's interested goes to cityofsouthgate.org, clicks on the job tab, find the job you like, and apply. Right now, we have a few jobs up, but I expect pretty soon we'll have quite a few more after the budget was approved. Right now, in Parks and Rec, we have a lifeguard, lifeguard positions available, grounds, a grounds rec leader two, and a transit service coordinator. And police department, always looking for good police officers. If you want to come on as a police recruit or new police officers, $15,000 signing bonus. As a lateral, it's a $20,000 signing bonus. And last but not least, in Public Works, we're looking for a journey electrician and a senior management analyst in engineering. So, with that, please apply.
Thank you. Captain Perez?
Good evening. So, this Thursday, the Southern California Office of Mothers Against Drunk Drivers is going to recognize two of our police officers for their diligent efforts in apprehending impaired drivers that put the members of our community in danger. So, we're looking forward to celebrating that moment with them.
Congratulations. Do you know, I'm sure you know the name of the officers?
Yes, it's Officer Georgina Vargas and Officer Bridget Crum.
Nice. Congratulations to the great job. Okay, City Manager?
Good evening, Vice Mayor and council. Couple things I'll touch on that we had some questions on, one of them being the progress at looking at any options for a call-in feature or return to Zoom as was a request to bring that back for more discussion. I just wanted to update council that I've been doing some preliminary research at this point and looking into it. We have an interesting staffing quirk that happens. We had in the past, we have our clerk, Yodit, who does a great job of handling the meeting, the, all the presentations, all the work that goes into keeping everything on time, plus has had work in the past where she was handling all the Zoom calls, and that was extra. That work got taken away, gave her some free time. Then, we added the video process. So, we now have got this YouTube video channel, which requires monitoring the cameras, making sure it's live feed, checking on all that, which has taken back all that time. If there was a desire to bring back something like a call-in feature or some sort of Zoom, there's not enough room on the plate for Yodit or our planning commission support or our Parks and Rec to add all these pieces of technology as well as run the meeting. So, we would have to look at a process that would add another person at the desk to handle this, which is possible. But then, we're adding staffing costs on top of any, say, licensing costs. So, I'm looking at that and just trying to price it out. So, I just wanted to let you know that it's not gone away. But, you know, we just have to balance probably the look. I'll get, I'll get more of a definitive price for you probably later in July or early August with, and come back with that number for you.
All right.
And then, on a second item, there's just a question about the progress of our IT strategic group plan. And there was a roadmap already done several years ago. There's been steady progress made on that. And including tonight, we have James from our IT team in the back here, in case you have any questions on consent calendar where we're purchasing virtual server equipment and the licensing for virtual servers, which is more of a modern technology instead of physical servers. So, that's something that's on the roadmap. It's happening tonight. In the budget, you approved refreshing with new finance software, which is a big investment, and also to approve us having more planning, building, public work counter software. So, we're making progress. In August, we'll come with an update of what the roadmap was, progress made to date, what's on the future plans. So, don't think things are idly sitting by. Do appreciate any community member's input, including a thought of including our treasurer and his technology input. Certainly, we welcome his thoughts on that. But I just want to let you know that we are not standing by. We are trying to improve technology, including filming this, these very meetings, and to try to stay current and connected to our residents. That's all.
Thank you. City Attorney?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I have nothing to report right now.
Thank you. City Treasurer?
Madam Vice Mayor, nothing new to report.
Thank you. City Clerk?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Avalos?
Thank you. So, I had the pleasure of attending the 107th birthday for Ms. Dora Hernandez. Thank you, Community Development, for bringing that to the attention. I think it was well attended. But more importantly, the advice that she gave us all, which is to get along with your neighbors, have faith in God, and just be genuine to who you are. So, I appreciate her words of wisdom. I also attended the vector control meeting this month where we passed budget with healthy reserves. Also had the pleasure of attending the Southgate High graduation, fourth year now, which was very well attended. And the superintendent also attended, which was really nice. I also attended the city council's hot dog grill that we hosted for all of the city employees. I have to give it to the grill master over on the other side. He did a phenomenal job in making sure that everyone was well fed. But I think when we all work collaboratively and united, we can do a lot. So, thank you, Mr. Councilmember Joshua Barone, for the idea. But more importantly, to show all of our employees that they are valued and appreciated by this council. All of the departments, from the smallest thing to keeping our city safe. I think it's important that we acknowledge them because they are the backbone that keeps the city running. They are the backbone that the residents see day in and day out when things are not going well or when things are going well. So, I hope that you felt the love from this council staff. I would also like to clarify some misinformation that is out in the community, unfortunately, about the upcoming election. Yeah, I know. I have neither seeked out or solicited any candidate to run for council. I am very disappointed with the individual or individuals that have begun to speak this room. that have begun to speak this rumor. Sadly, they hide in the shadows. They don't have the courage to say, I'm the one who is saying these things. I am running a candidate, though. And that's me, myself, and I. Let me assure this council colleagues and the community that I don't take these rumors lightly. As an election is in the horizon, there are those who are trying to divide our council as well as our community. As in the past four years, I have worked together with all of my colleagues to continue to move our beautiful city forward. I look forward to continue to work together for the betterment of the South Gate residents, the businesses, and the council unity. So I sincerely hope that this is going to put that rumor to rest. I will be running, and I am not in any way, shape, or form seeking out anyone else to run for council. This is the United States of America, and anybody is freely capable of running, should they wish to run. But run on your own merit and not on rumors. So I have an open door policy. If anyone has any questions, reach out to me. I'm more than available to have these conversations offline. Also, I want to wish our community a happy 4th of July. Make sure you are safe and sane out there. There are a lot of illegal fireworks that are going on, and they are definitely disturbing our babies, our children, our animals. So let's just be mindful. And I know our police department is out in force with citations for those illegal fireworks, which unfortunately have been happening. That is all that I have. And I would like to request if we can close in memoriam, Vice Mayor, of a resident who passed away May 29th. He was my neighbor. His name is Luis Hernandez. Was a resident of South Gate for over 60 years. He was one of three families that originally moved into South Gate. Was from Puerto Rico. And he has seen how our city has grown. And just before his passing, he did indicate, you're doing a good job, Ilar. Continue to do right by the community. And I will assure you, I will continue to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. We wish you, we will adjourn in his merry. Councilman Baron?
Yes. Well, first, I don't want to just say that, you know, that Wednesday, the 19th, the barbecue, the hot dog barbecue was a lot of fun. But I really want to thank everybody that also couldn't be there, but also participated in the event. I want to thank, of course, our city clerk, Yodit Lays, our city treasurer, Jose de la Paz, our city attorney, Rose Salinas, and of course, all of my council colleagues for your contribution to make this event possible. I want to thank my daughters for, you know, being there with me. They asked me, what do you want to do for your birthday? I said, well, I want to serve people food. And they said, okay, well, we're there with you because we want to be with you for your birthday. So, so it was great to have them there. My little one was doing her best, trying to serve the buns as fast as she could. It was just great. And the feedback that we're getting from staff is telling me that it was, it was well deserved and well, you know, needed. And I think we need to, as council members, remember that, you know, we stand here and we tell everybody, hey, we're a family. We're here to do this together. We're going to work this out together. If there's an issue, we're going to back you up because we know that you're working hard for us. Every once in a while, it's good to just have a good time. Have a barbecue, see some smiles, you know. I want to say that I did a pretty good job grilling because I enjoyed the hot dogs really. I don't know if I was just hungry, but they were really good. So, but it was a great event. And again, thank you to everybody because it was a great contribution that we made to put a smile on our staff's face. We served over almost 200 hot dogs, which is great. And we had some salads, and it was just a fun event. But thank you, guys, everybody, for your help and your contribution. I also was able to attend the South Gate High graduation. It was just great to see that, you know, it was the second year I've been involved with that. I was very happy that I wasn't asked to speak this year. Last year, we got asked to speak, and I was like, wait a minute. It was kind of scary the first time, but I was happy I wasn't there to speak. But I was very happy to be there with the students, to see them, and to just kind of think in my head that 24 years ago, I was sitting where they were. We still did it at South Gate High School at the football field at the time. But I kept, you know, just saying, 24 years ago, I was, I was there. And then today, I'm here in the stage to honor them and prepare for them. But it's, it was a blessing to be there. Go Rams, once a Ram, always a Ram.
Always a Ram. There you go.
And to the principal, Leo Gonzalez, he did a great job with his speech. And of course, the superintendent, very inspirational speech that he gave as well. So looking forward to see some great things. We had some students that had, you know, high GPAs, you know, a lot of sashers saying that they're going to UCLA, going to some really big schools. So very proud of the students in our city and looking forward to see what the next generation has to offer to our community. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Oh, we forgot one thing. Please, please. It's the honors.
Thank you. So this Friday, of course, I'm going to invite everybody. This is my sales pitch. I'm also the president of the Sella Kuanas Club. This Friday is our charter banquet being held in Huntington Park. We are a service group that is using this as a way to highlight our future events. We're going to, you know, honor all of our charter members that we have. We had 24 charter members. So we're going to be able to take our pledge, get our charter pins, and really highlight what our future plans for this organization is. We have educators, city officials. We have the librarian from Huntington Park Library. And we just have a well-rounded group of individuals that really want to make an impact in the region. So I'm very excited about this. If anybody is interested, please let me know. I can email you the invitation. It'll be a great event Friday. It's a $40 ticket. That all the money raised from this is going towards our funding for a lot of our projects that we have for the fall of this year. And also, our goal, our ultimate goal, is to grow the key clubs in our region. We already have one key club that we're sponsoring at Bell Gardens High School, which will be our first sponsored from the Sella Kuanas. And that's, you know, hopefully happening really soon. And we're hoping to expand those to all the schools in the Sella area. South Gate, Kuanas does a great job with the South Gate High Schools to get those groups going. I think some of the other cities need help, and I'm happy that we're able to help with that. So, but yes, we have a great event this Friday. And thank you, Councilwoman Avalos.
Councilman Rios?
Good evening, folks. When I started this hour, is everybody? Okay, I don't have a lot, but yeah, I'll be at that event. The Kuanas, congratulations on getting that going with the neighboring folks here in the region. Also, that event that happened, that employee, that was really neat. I think we almost need to do it every year. I mean, because it's just a fun thing to do, especially when it's summer, right? Heat and everybody just came out and enjoyed the day. And we didn't, I didn't even hear the noise that HVAC, that machine did. I mean, but that much, but it's a good area, and it's not used enough, I think. We should have more lunches there. It just seems like something to do. Well, I thank the library, the county library for being here. You folks are always here. Thank you for the good activities that you provide at both our libraries here in the, here in the city. And encouraging reading, I think, very important because I work at a college, and I'm telling you, these kids are not reading as like they used to read, you know? And we all know that. The research is there, and they're YouTube-ing, they're doing other things and to get the information. But yeah, it's reading is still very important. So thank you for supporting our, and having a lunch program with it. That sounds neat. Let's see, and I just want to, a couple of things. The election, you mentioned, I think it's important that we do have an election, not only of local election, but a county, we have state, federal. I mean, there's a lot of, it's an opportunity. It's what we call the feast of democracy in politics. I mean, because it's an opportunity for people to really start getting involved. Not towards, don't wait till elections. That's what a lot of people wait till the, it's time right now to start getting, because there's going to be a lot of information out there and a lot of misinformation out there, too. So it's also important that people do their civic duty and get involved. So I just wanted to let people know that. And then I want to go back to the parks. Parks make life better. But, you know, the whole thing of the heat, you know, is just starting to come upon us. And I think it's going to get a little heated. Do we have plans for, and maybe you could talk a little bit about, when it does get hot, that people might not have air conditioning in this, some area, and that they might need. Do we have any plans to help some of our residents, our older people, people that are vulnerable?
We do have a, Councilman Rios, we do have a set cooling station plan that allows us to open up a cooling station when it's either three days of 95 or higher or one day of 100 or higher that is forecast for the area. And then at those times, we open our cooling stations. Our main cooling station is the senior center. And if that is not usable for any reason, we open up the auditorium or the sports center, and we allow our residents to come into those places from 9:00 to 6:00, just to find a comfortable place to sit down, read a book, or do something during this heat if they don't have some other way to alleviate that in their house.
Thank you. That was very good. Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you. Very quick, just want to say thank you to our Councilman Josh Baron for putting together the, the hot dog grill. And you did a great job. Yeah, I think everybody enjoyed it. So thank you on that. Just very quick, Friday, I attended the Rotary Golf Tournament. It was very well attended. I did hit this time, too. So I'm doing better, doing better. So hopefully, next time. Yes, I was actually hitting, so it was pretty good. But it's just great to see the Rotarys and the amount of funding that they, they collect and they use for. So it's a lot of the, they give a lot to the, to the community. So that's, that's wonderful. Very quick. We will be adjourning in the memory of Luis Hernandez. And also, we will be adjourning in the memory of a little angel that left his family. He was only six months old, Isra Quintanilla. And his grandfather, Chris Perez? Lopez? Chris Lopez. So let's keep him in our thoughts and prayers. and the family. And we will be adjourning on their memory. So with that, let's move on to consent calendar.
Consent calendar items, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, and 17 are consent calendar items.
Okay. Anybody want to pull any item?
Madam Vice Mayor?
Yes.
I just would like to make a note that I will be recusing myself from item number 8, 10, 15, and 16 because I have to deal with projects that are in the park. And I'm a new board member to the South Gate Junior Athletic Association. So I'd like to just
Okay.
recuse myself for those.
And Mr. Baron, you're doing that because you're, you're doing out an abundance of caution. Your work with the JA is strictly volunteer-based.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, and myself also, I will be recusing myself on item 5 for the abundance of causes also because I do live on, close to Tweedy Boulevard, and I will be recusing myself on that item. And do we have anybody in the audience that would like to speak on these items? Or want to pull any items? Do we have any, we'll close the audience section. Do we have any emails?
Yes, Madam Vice Mayor, we have one from Mr. Mario Dominguez for item number 16. He wants to, he states that item 16 covers the South Gate Park Fence Project, fully funded through CDBG funds in the fiscal year 2324 budget. This shows our city's ability to use those funds for projects like the upcoming splash pad at Hollydale Regional Park. The city manager has indicated that once the splash pad is in the park's master plan and prioritized by our Parks and Recreation Commissioners, funding can proceed. Therefore, CDBG funds should be feasible for the splash pad construction alongside potential ARPA fund support. That's it for tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Being known, can I get a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Second. Okay. And roll call?
Well, can I say something regarding some?
Sure.
Before we vote? I just want to say to community, most of us, we do these consent items. A lot of us, well, all of us in the council actually meet with staff to talk about these issues, to ask questions. So a lot of us already did, and we're, these are good recommendations and policies that benefit the city. So I just want to let the community know that we're now just passing over that this is something that we've been throughout the week. And, and if we had questions, we would ask them here. So, yeah.
And Madam Vice Mayor, just one
Oh, well, go ahead.
quick comment. And item 14 for the, since Rob mentioned also the service technology, it's, it's long due for on some of these items, especially when it comes to disaster recovery and being able to, you know, repair or restore from some of these critical systems that we utilize in the city depends on. So I think it's long overdue. That should have been replaced probably seven years ago. So no questions and no concerns on that item.
Thank you. Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Avalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Baron, have you recused from 8, 10, 15, and 16?
Yes, that's correct. And yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Rios?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Davila, have you recused from 5?
Yes. Recused from 5 and yes on the vote.
Thank you.
Okay, motion passes. Then we move on to
Madam Vice Mayor, just to echo Councilmember Rios's comment. All of these items, we do review with staff prior to. But a lot of these items don't just benefit the city. They benefit all of the residents that reside in the city. Even if you sometimes don't see it, it's not tangible. It services that need to be provided.
Absolutely, absolutely. And just, just what Councilman Rios mentioned, you know, before we come to this meeting, we already have gone through the agenda, read the agenda, asked any questions regarding any item. And we're ready to go. Okay, so with that, we'll move on to item number 18, which is warrants. Mr. Auditor?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Councilmember Baron. The city council will reconsider approving the warrant register for June 25th, 2024. Grand total is $5,758,169.60. Councillations are 106100, 106187. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'd like to go ahead and open up to any member here in the audience. If they have any questions regarding the warrant register, seeing none. Is there any emails?
We have no emails.
You have no emails? I would like just to make a quick comment that, you know, we do have, it's a large amount that we paid out this, this warrant register. We had some large payments going out to Sequel. Those payments for our construction on Garfield and Long Beach area. We also had the All Cities Engineer for Water Main work. That was about $1.1 million that was paid out this, this time. And also the Mark Thomas Company for $432,000. A lot of things that we're, you know, that we're working on throughout the city when designing and getting ready for our CIP projects were part of this warrant register. So I just wanted to highlight those.
Thank you. So we're ready for a vote?
Motion.
Second, and a motion, the second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Avalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Baron?
Yes.